I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen in Millville, Massachusetts to order at 7 o'clock on June 20th. And we will do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the British States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And before we get into the rest of the agenda, if everyone can just give names in case there's someone that's new here. So Roland, start with you.
Roland Barrett.
Richard Remmelt.
Andrew Allward.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Crusotown Administrator.
Matthew Mailey.
Okay. So, new business, starting with the joint meeting with the Finance Committee to approve year-end account transfers. So, the joint meeting is not happening. There were too many people on the Finance Committee who could not be here this evening. There was just, it was just a lot of logistics. Like, we could have forced it, but there's nothing that's really urgent here, so I said, why don't we try to reschedule to a Zoom or something for them? But, we had the option of, we can approve these tonight, we can push these to July 10th. They're not due until July 15th.
The 15th.
The 15th. So, we have time, but I'm, I'm fine with whatever the rest of the Board wants to do. I can, we can do it or we're not doing it.
Yep. And things may change between now and then from what you're looking at right now. So, when that's happened in the past, you approve something like this, and then you get another one later at July 10th. You might not have anything, but right now, this is based on what we know.
Current information.
As much as we do know.
Yeah. So, thoughts? Do you want to, do you want to approve this tonight and then see how it goes? Or...I have no strong opinion.
Okay.
Okay, we're pushing it, or do you want to approve it?
We can do, yeah, we can approve it, or we can push it out.
Okay, no one cares?
Is there any, there's nothing of, like, urgency, right? There's not going to be any projected big changes? It's just going to be?
Correct. So, we don't, we tried to project what we think is likely to happen. And so, in the, in your, you know, what I slipped into your packets today is the year-end transfers and how it was determined, as well as a year-to-date budget to actual. And you'll see I, my, some of my hieroglyphics of the things that I'd be looking at or keeping an eye on. So, that's in there for, you can study that at your leisure if you want. But, we've reflected those types, those comments in terms of where we need to make transfers in what's before you right now.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, why don't we do it tonight, and then hopefully it won't change? And then, we can be done, maybe?
Right.
Yep.
It's crossed, yeah.
Okay. So, and then, Peter, we need to read each one of these.
So, you can refer to the schedule, or if you want to read them. All of the funds are going to be coming out of the tri-county vote, either transportation or the tuition, because we had no students there. We budgeted based on what we thought were going to be three students, and turns out there were none. And so, that's the source of the funding that we're using to fill out the budgets that are going to come up short.
Okay.
And so, you can read them however you want, ask questions.
Okay.
Most are not, hopefully not surprises, anyway. So, if you want to just walk through them for your...
Yeah.
So, we have assessors, financial services, you know, looking at where we're at year-to-date and what we, what's anticipated by the town accountant that might come in. She's recommending $4,500 as an addition to their budget. Likewise, on technology support services, $5,000. On firefighter, EMT, and wages, $28,000 is where it goes into, that one line item, but it's really to cover the whole department total, if you will. And some of the other line items are above. We, what we have is estimated of actual needs for part-time wages, as well as, we have one person retiring, and there's a, you know, payout under the union contract that's factored in here as well. So, that's $28,000. Fire, other expenses that would cover some maintenance things and things like that, so $6,000. MES water operations, I thought we might need a little bit more, but we do have some cushion in there. So, we just wanted to be sure, we had four quarterly, four quarters of invoices in there. There is the most recent one, which came in at a higher amount than expected. There were some unilateral increases, which we need to sort of, I call it disputed, but we haven't quite disputed yet.
Right.
And then, townwide gas, you can see, you know, that's tracking at a much higher rate than we even thought, you know, a year and a half ago when we did the budget.
Okay.
Anybody have any concerns or questions?
Nope.
Uh, yeah, I have one. So, for firefighter, EMT, part-time wages, has there been a plan to rectify this issue in the future by the fire department?
So, I think that's coming up later in your agenda, is really this Public Safety Committee, part of its purpose, I presume, is to talk about recruitment, retention, as well as existing staffing now and going forward, how best to staff. I think...
Yeah. And I think this is less than last year, but we also did increase the firefighters, the fire department's budget significantly this year.
Yeah.
So, what we could do to maybe keep our finger on the pulse a little bit better is have the chief come in quarterly. So, the end of the next quarter is September 30th, so maybe have him come in October 15th, and have him map what he's paid for wages versus what was allocated in his budget. And then, we do that on January 15th, and then on April 15th.
Well, that, that's, I don't have any disagreements with that, but if you're not going to change anything in how you're operating, it's probably just going to happen again. So, regardless of if he comes in to talk about, that's why I wanted to, because even when we were discussing the budget, I asked if you had a plan and if you could get one. So, that's why I was asking, like, has there been any work on that?
No, and what you have, but you do see in your packets, his appointments as a strong chief, what he's made to the department. You'll see there's a vacancy right there at the, because of the retirement, that's the effect of June 30th.
Full-time employee.
So, full-time firefighter, EMT. He will be going out to the market to get somebody. That's a union position, won't necessarily be a deputy chief, which is at a slightly higher rate under the union contract, but it would be a full-time firefighter. And in the budgeting, as Jen says, we did provide extra funding, both for the full-time positions contemplating, not sure where that was going to go, including on our EMT, whether that EMT becomes a full-time firefighter somewhere halfway through the fiscal year. So, we tried to budget for that. And he tried to budget for the part-time to be closer to reality that we've experienced both this past year and the year before. So, I, but as far as a, a plan to come up with something more creative, or, you know, better coverage for lower dollars?
I don't see it as much as being a budget issue, which is what we basically treat it as with giving more money. It's more of a structural issue of how the department responds to calls.
Yeah.
That hasn't been addressed.
Yeah, so he, but he has, if you look at the, and you get into the appointments, he has changed some of the leadership structure. So, he's made some folks, he's made, you know, captain, he's made a couple of lieutenants in there, and so forth.
But it's more of a procedure of how you schedule people, and how that happens, not so much who's in charge.
Yeah, I think that's the part that hopefully the new committee will assist with.
Isn't that, Richard, that was your intention for the committee?
Yeah. Well, the intention is to have at least a living document drafted between both agencies. They can update periodically, whether it be like three to five slides, just to say, okay, here's the organization, and here's how we're managing our staff to meet our goals, and here's what it should look like, and what our ask is. Because it should always be some sort of strive towards, you know, better quality and customer service, so...that's kind of the goal. And of course, participation, it's a big ask, you know, a lot of folks, you know, don't want to participate, you know, from the town, so...
Yeah, so I spoke to the chief today. He's, has to, he teaches a course on Tuesday evenings, so he's not able to be here. But I spoke to him just in terms of the situation of retirement, and, you know, other staffing changes that might be happening. And, you know, he, he actually is pretty encouraged. He's not discouraged by the situation. He's encouraged by, there's interest out there for joining the department.
Yeah.
And he might have internal candidates, he may, you know, he's going to go out to the market, basically, but, you know, so we'll see on filling the full-time position and how it's best used. But at the, at the same time, some of the changes he's made to the folks are, some are doing more training than otherwise wasn't being done, let's just say.
Right. And that's driving up the cost of the part-time wages?
Yes.
Yeah. So, could we maybe have him attend on July 10th to talk about, if he has anything in place? Would that make sense?
Sure.
Could we, could we verify if he had something before we have him come, though? Because otherwise, it seems to be...
Well, I, I wonder, though, to answer Andy's question, I think it really gets down into the lower part of the agenda here with that committee, and what it really starts to do. But I think before he can come be, speak, I mean, he can speak about things as they are, but he won't have the benefit of that committee and its input.
Do you want to, do you want to push that up now, and just kind of chat briefly about it? Take it out of order?
Let's, well, let's finish this, and then, what I, I would like to take the things out of order for the people that are here, and then we can, is that okay?
Yeah.
I just realized I took this first, and there are people here, and like, we can do this with nobody here. So, but it was first, so I did it first. Um, okay. So, I will make a motion to approve the year-end transfers as stated in the ledger submitted by Peter Crusotown Administrator. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Roland.
Before we approve it...
There is further discussion allowed? Matthew, you're right on time?
Just, uh, just one point of concern in my first question, or my second question will be, depending on the answer to the first question. So, our deadlines for, I'm just looking at tri-county tuition and transportation. So, those, like, reallocations, there'll still be some money left for tri-county, like, a remainder, right?
This is for the last year's budget, so we're going to, like, refund, we'll fund those accounts starting July 1st with the budget that we approved at the town meeting.
It's the next 10 days, that's what we're using.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
That's correct.
And there'll be no tuition coming in the next 10 days.
No.
All right, just, we're good.
No, no, okay. All right. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer's aye. Matthew?
Aye.
Okay.
So, I'll have you sign in that section there, and then I'll pass that on to Finance Committee.
All right, sounds good. Um, okay, and then, looking at the agenda of who's here for things on the agenda, so I'm going to guess that Tina, you're here to talk about the COA request for the automatic door? Okay, do you want to go out to the table? So, in the packets, there's, actually, I have it in the email right here. So, Tina saw someone struggling with a wheelchair, so she wanted to get maybe an automatic door installed at the senior center. So, those are the doors, you push the button, and the door opens for people, so...
Right. So, we got two quotes. One was for $5,000, and the other one was over $6,000. So, so therefore, I was willing to go with the one for $5,000.
Okay.
The one for the $5,000 is battery backup rather than electrical, so I don't have to get an electrician in there for that one.
Thank you.
So, primarily, yeah, I did call the American Disability Association, or, and they said that it wasn't required. However, if somebody should call and complain about it, then it's going to be involving an investigation and so forth, so on. Where I've seen people struggle in wheelchairs to get into the building, I'd rather not have that issue. I'd rather have it...
Addressed.
Addressed. The door opener installed, and be done with it.
Okay.
And plus the fact that we have the town meeting, uh...
Yeah, that's an emergency center, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And you have that as a cooling station, or heating station.
Right, and a lot of things, so, so I think it should be.
Border Health, uh...
So, and, and I am asking for ARPA funds for that, is what.
Okay. Okay. So, does anyone have their ARPA fund summary? It's this page in the packets?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you notice, where we have actually, we were given $952,966, and we've allocated $1.005 million. So, we're over by $50,000. But Peter and I were looking at a few things on the list. So, the first is the police command vehicle. So, we allocated $45,000.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've gotten $25,000 from the state, so that gives us $25,000 back. Did I say that correct?
Correct. Yeah, so we only need $20,000 of the 45, so we can repurpose 25. That's half of the overage, if you will, already, right?
Yep.
And then, the other half of the overage would be, we allocated at the May 16th meeting, $25,000 for our water study. But we have MES water and WCS consultant, $109,000. So, what we can do is take that $25,000 out of the MES water consultant, and that gives us the $50,000 to bring us back down to $950.
Okay.
Okay? So, to make that clear on the MES water, I am going to amend my motion for May 16th, 2021, and have the $25,000 from the water study pulled from the already allocated MES water and WCS consultant, um, ARPA funds that were allocated previously.
Mm-hmm.
And looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Roland. Any further discussion?
So, how's it being funded? Sorry.
So, we're going to take, so instead, we're going to take this $25,000 we allocated on May 16th and take it out of there. We're going to take it from the line above, the 109 that we already allocated for water, right above it.
Okay. And there's still enough in there?
Yes, we've only spent $20,000 so far. So, the current balance is $69,987. Why do we call that $70,000?
Yeah, we spent, uh, about $39,000 of it so far.
Yeah.
So, we're down to $70,000. We're going to, the balance on the right-hand column of that line item, we're going to use, allocate 25 of that remaining $70,000-ish for this water study, um, instead of having it as a separate line item. So, we're using what's already been...
Allocated.
...been allocated.
But wasn't that original amount allocated for a specific reason? For the 109?
Well, one could argue that it was allocated just for this purpose as well. That 109 was for water consulting, Dr. Gullik, right? It was also for the various changeovers that we were anticipating to the, like, you have a corrective action plan in your packet, you know, anticipating the changes, like the switch to permanginate, all that stuff that we're planning to do to make the water treatment and water better, is what that, without any specifics. We didn't get into too much specifics on that 109. And so, I, I had us put the water study as a separate line item. I contemplated not having it as a separate line item, because it was arguably already covered by the 109. Looking in the totals, clearly it belongs up in the 109 at this stage. You follow me?
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland, you get to go first, as usual.
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer's aye. Matthew?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, so that brings us back down to, now we're even. Now, to find $5,500 for the, um, senior center. Yeah, so the...
Question for you.
Yes.
What's going on with the salt shed?
So, we're in the, we have a dra, we've drafted the IFB invitation for bids. We need from the state, they need to put in their percentages that are required, you know, for women-owned, minority-owned businesses, so we're at that stage of the game. And then, legal counsel to review the packet before we go out.
Okay.
Yeah, it's moving along.
So, it's moving along?
It's moving along slowly, but it's, uh...
I know, everything is just slow.
Technically, it's encumbered, you just...
That's correct. That's correct.
You only show the...
And because we're getting 75 grand from the state, we have to do that...
Got to spend it.
Piece.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, Peter and I were looking at some of the numbers. So, if you look at the very first line, the ARPA Administrator Town Hall Wages, so we approved $146,000 there. The balance there is 107, 193. So, we thought we could pull $5,500, that's what you're asking for, Tina, from that number. But then, I think all, everyone should know, like, we're out of ARPA funds now. Everything has been spent. We're kind of chipping away at other allocations now, so that's, we're done. We have no more, we literally have no more ARPA funds. We've spent all of it, which is great. We should, I'm glad we spent it all, but that's where we are.
And I just want to point out that Sarah's here on the screen, she's here remotely. She's our ARPA administrator, okay? She helped pull this together.
Yep.
She pulled the bulk of it together. I did a little tweaking. Um, and she's the resource, principally the resource for that line item, which I have not had enough of. And so, uh, you know, we have a balance there. I doubt we'll need all of that balance anyway, but I want to use, I hope we get to use a big chunk of that balance as we get more of her time on various things, so...but I also wanted to recognize, she's here, she's our ARPA expert, and helped, you know, compile this information. And she's driving, so we don't want to upset her too much.
Okay. So, but does that seem reasonable to everyone? Okay.
Yeah.
So, I will make a motion to pull $5,500 from the ARPA Administrator Town Hall Wages to fund the Council on Agent Request for an Automatic Door.
I'll second.
Thank you, Richard.
Quick question.
Yes, we're at, you're at perfect timing. We're at discussion.
Um, because we did, did we have to do a motion for the other $25,000 to bring the total balance?
Do we have to pull that out? We can.
Or do we need to do that?
We could do that, yeah, just to reduce it.
I was just thinking.
Sure.
We can do that next.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? About the door, anything like that? Any other questions for Tina? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
But just, you're welcome, but this is it. If you have any more money, we spent it.
Yeah. I don't think I'll need anything else right now.
Great, perfect.
I'll come back to you if I do.
That's right, I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. So then, I will make a motion to reduce the police command line vehicle from $45,000 to $20,000, as we were given $25,000 from the state for that. Looking for a second.
Second. Richard beat me.
Andrew did.
It was Andrew.
Oh, Andrew.
Okay.
I thought about it, but I wanted to give it to Andrew.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Any other questions? Yes.
So, is, with the, being with the, the $25,000 with the state, is that, like, in limbo still, or is that, like, definitive, like?
No, I think we have the money in the bank.
Okay, we do, okay. That's one thing that was like...
It's always one of those things.
Before we do it...
All things were signed on, off on it, right? Chief, you took care of that. Yeah, I think we got the money in the bank.
Okay, so it's all...
And this is an outright purchase, the equity lease is off the table.
That's right. So, you remember that, that town meeting?
You can come up to the table, Chief, if you have comments.
There was X amount, approve, plus we counted on the 45. Now, we're getting 25, so it's, we're down to 20 of ARPA.
Yeah.
Right, Chief?
Yes. Uh, I, I have started buying some supplies for that car that would coincide with the command vehicle.
Yeah.
Um, like a specialized radio that can allow us to talk to others.
So, I might have pushed the envelope, is what you're saying?
And I did put a computer in there also.
Yeah.
Because that's going to be a patrol vehicle.
So, that's a little more than the...
So, I'm looking about $15,000 in outfitting on that right now.
So, whoa, so what's your total number for the two cars as outfitted? As your planned outfit?
One was going to be like $52,000. I'm sorry, I don't have the, um, and, uh, that was gonna, I went with the older car, 22 on that one, and it's going to be around 40-something, high 40s.
On the, on the command vehicle?
On the admin car.
Plus the equipment?
Plus.
The equipment was going to be...
So, let's say it's 48, plus 15.
Digital 15.
So, 63?
63, yeah.
So, I'm trying to make it, I was trying to make it also to work for a patrol vehicle during the day, and also coincide with...
We have 115 total.
And then, we have 120 allocated with the 25 from the state, our 20, and the 75 from town meeting.
Yeah.
So, you still have a $5,000 cushion, even with this move.
Yeah.
Don't spend anymore, this is it. This is it.
A little nervous.
The rest will come out of your pocket.
It does every week.
Okay. Okay, so is everyone comfortable? And there's still a $5,000 cushion in there, to be honest, even with that. Okay. All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so ARPA is balanced, but all of it is spent, so if you...
But, but you also have, you have C, C3.
Oh, yep, I was going to do that.
Okay, whether you do that right now, real quick? So, that's, that, that really would come out of the line item, fire station upgrades.
Yeah, we've already allocated $25,000, so we can just, I have no doubt.
So, it's just a more informational...
Yeah.
Right? And on C4, I, not knowing this, I was looking for a little sort of squishy fund...
Yeah.
Because occasionally, the, it's generally the senior center, it's generally Tina says, can we spend $450 on a such-and-such from ARPA? And I just wanted 10 grand to play with, but I'm not asking for that now. So, I'm saying, strike that unless we find that we really don't need some of this other stuff.
If something else falls through, then we can take.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, Florida State?
For the fire station upgrades though, was that ever, did that have a specific reasoning for why?
No, remember we had earmarked, is it just like the, the Old Town Hall?
Yes.
And the police station upgrades? We really wanted to earmark that so that we could justify hanging on to it, not, in case it gets taken back by the feds, or attempts to take money back that hasn't been spent by the feds. So, that's what that was all about back when you did that. And this is a, this eight grand is a perfect example of something like that.
And there aren't any large capital costs, like a roof or anything like that?
No, no. Their roof's good, their HVAC's good, um, they might have wanted to do a little bit of renovating inside the.
Yes, they do.
Place, but they, a lot of that, they can do themselves as well, so.
So, it still gives them seventeen thousand if they want to make some changes. Yeah. And so, we'll just have to tell them, see, you know, keep within your budget, you want to make these other changes.
Right.
Okay. So then, before we move on from ARPA, Sarah, since you did join us, thank you so much for waiting patiently. I was wondering if there's anything else you wanted to discuss, or maybe the, you mentioned, I know you've also done the playground at police station grant as well, so if you want to cover those two things?
Are you able to hear, Sarah?
I think you've covered most of it. Can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Okay. Uh, yeah, thank you so much for going over all the ARPA stuff, I think you've covered most of it, um, so I don't have anything else, unless you all have any questions for me.
Well, I think the question, Sarah, was just to talk a little bit about what we were planning to do for the property across the street from the current town hall. You, you may want to pull over, Sarah, or you're.
The property across the town hall?
Yeah, in other words, in, in, you know, the question we have on the agenda talking about the playground, which is in disrepair and closed at the old, at the police station. There was some consideration of a basketball court, but we also came to realize that, geez, we own all that land between the police station and Uxbridge line. So, the plan was to go forward, and we worked with Kevin Delgizzi as well, who was enthusiastic, going forward with, uh, doing some sort of trail system, a river walk, you access to the waterfront, so, you know, that's, well, that's on your dance card to see about making, helping make that happen in some manner, so that's on the agenda, just to update folks on that.
Yep, we submitted that project through the One Stop, so hoping to get some good feedback there in regards to creating sort of a sense of place down by the water where we can, you know, use sort of like some passive recreation, even maybe some active recreation. We did submit for a redo grant to, uh, you know, fix up the park that's defunct in the back, unfortunately, we did not get funded for that, so I'm glad that we're gonna be expending some ARPA funds on that project. So, hopefully, um, we'll have some feedback on the One Stop, um, by midsummer.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Peter, is there anything else you think that Sarah needs to comment on the agenda?
No, I mean, she's helping with the Old Town Hall, uh, she also submitted a grant, the One Stop Grant, so it's a new way you can catch all, you put in a couple of different things, and we're a rural community, um, is how we're classified, basically, and she submitted in for, uh, Old Town Hall roof repair, so a portion of what we hope to do in the Old Town Hall i- is submitted a grant, and you, you asked, uh, we asked for two hundred grand on that one. Wanted to be kind of not too high, not too low in that regard, so, and we have an engineering drawing for that roof repair, already done, structural engineer.
Great.
Right, Sarah? So, we're good on that?
Okay.
Correct.
Anything else?
No, I think that's.
Okay. All right, Sarah, thank you for joining, I can see you're in the car, so if you want to drop, you can, but you're welcome to stay and listen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
Do we want to do a motion for the fire security?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Do you want to make the motion, Andrew? I feel like I've been making all the motions.
Sure, yeah. Um, so I'll make a motion.
I'll top turn.
I'll make a motion to approve eight thousand for the fire department's security, uh, system.
I'll second.
From ARPA funds, sorry.
From the allocated ARPA funds?
Yep, from the allocated ARPA funds.
Okay. Matthew, second? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye, Matthew?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so that's all done.
Good job.
Okay, um, so, I see, do you want to talk MES water? Is this an interested party?
Sure.
Okay.
We have an interested party here. Oh, hello.
I mean, I'm not far away, I don't know.
So, in your package, you saw the corrective action plan that, uh, we had spoken about at the last meeting.
It's riveting reading.
And it has all sorts of plots and graphs and things like that, that Dr. Gullik put together, but basically what it talked about was, uh, Mast EP wanted a corrective action plan that contemplated both, um, the, the, the bulk water that was taking place the end of the school year and is now complete, basically. Also talked about the switch to permanginate as an intermediate plan, and then the long-term play of seeking out other solutions to address future PFAS limits, which will continue, which are expected to be much lower than they are today, and that, that then is the, um, the, that's the twenty-five grand that we talked about, that you had previously approved, um, for studying how to, uh, you know, get, uh, either an SL, SRF grant, uh, loan in the interim while DEP comes to market with their grant for which they say Millville is high on the list. So, that's all basically built into the corrective action plan. I haven't seen nor heard anything back from Mast EP, whether that's all, uh, accepted and, you know, they're happy with it, but I haven't heard anything against it, so.
Okay.
They'll have their review time, but it was, I thought, well crafted by Dr. Gullik, and that's, uh, there for your reading pleasure.
So, they only had it for a week?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, give them time.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
And I think in the meantime, yep, the, the, they've turned the water back on and stopped the water from the bulk water supply.
Okay.
As of today, basically.
Yeah, I noticed you didn't expend the funds out of the, the ARPA account, but you intended, right?
Not yet.
Did we spend, you spend all of it?
That's up next.
I think they did spend all of it.
We did?
I think they'll.
Yeah. Um, okay. So, with that, I think there's been some confusion with the process for reimbursement, actually, so I was gonna make a motion to make it just clear. So, I will make a motion regarding the bulk water reimbursement, the process is for the school district to purchase and pay for the water and submit a paid bill to the town of Millville for reimbursement, and then it's clear on what the process is and it's done. Um, so, looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Richard. Is there any discussion and questions? Erin?
So.
You come to the table.
When we, thank you. Um, I just want to clarify that, and you're making a motion that clarifies it.
Yes.
When we left the last meeting, you had said you were going to start a new, because of the confusion, you were going to contact the auditor and put all of us in the email.
Yep, I did not do that.
Okay.
Because Peter said, oh, I just forwarded this email over.
We had that email, but we have the other one that says we should not, for auditing purposes, we should not do anything that's a reimbursement, so that's why we were clarifying it.
Mm-hmm.
Because we had the.
So, our guy says to do it this way.
But we have the same auditor.
I, I mean, it's in their packets.
That's the old email, though. So, we would just, when we did leave the other day.
Mm-hmm.
It was just said, that's why I had connected with you, I was like, is there, and you had said, I'm going to send that email.
Yep.
And then you said, Jason has the email, but, and I was like, is she talking about the old one?
I was.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, we were told not to do it that way, that's why we were looking for the clarification, but there's no new clarification.
Yeah, so.
I think the motion clarifies.
There you go. And, and just to be clear, I, I, I don't know that I've seen anything from Bob Brown to BMR that's different, I haven't seen anything from Bob Brown to BMR, period, but Bob Brown, our CPA, May seventeenth, says to me, "All payments that represent reimbursements to BMRSD should be based on invoices paid by BMRSD. The town should receive adequate worksheets, invoices, and other material to document Millville's proportionate share of said expenditures." That's how he responded, which was my, in response to my question of, uh, his issues that he may have with this, based on what Dr. DeFalco had said regarding, "The auditors do not like it when you do reimbursements."
Okay.
So, anyway, that's where that's at, and I think the motion reflects what the town understands.
So, I guess my question is, why are we paying for something that is supplied by you to get reimbursed by you? Like, so the money, instead of the money going from one hand to the other, to the other, is, you, you all made the motion to set aside that money, you have it to pay the bill, so why does it have to be like three steps?
Yeah, so when I made this, my intent was to like have that go to the school district, like I, like we could either done it this way, or I was even thinking like just transfer the money from us to you, and then you would have it.
That's fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, and you would just have it, and then you could use it to buy bulk water. Um, that was, I was trying to minimize the burden on the town. That was, I, so I thought it would work like, here's fifteen thousand dollars, use it to buy water, I guess you could have used it to buy other stuff too, but then, um, we, the, we, we specifically earmarked it for bulk water, so hopefully, I think, and I don't think you would do anything like, you're not gonna buy shoes, Erin, I don't think you're gonna do that, but like.
But now, the motion you're making is, we're going to submit our, we're gonna pay it.
Mm-hmm.
And then show you that we paid it, and you're going to pay us back.
Yes.
So, why, I, I guess, so if it's fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Yep.
That's all you're going to pay, not the fifth, so why not just pay those bills instead of having the school put it up? And, because it, it's your money, and it's your.
Does seem very circular.
Yeah, I, I'm not trying to be, I'm trying to make it easier, but it feels like we're adding an extra step to pay a bill.
Yeah, so I think some of it on our side is precedent as well, like, cause, so that's what, we're having a negotiation on the side with the lawyers to get to what we pay for water. So, I don't want to, so this way, we're reimbursing a paid bill.
So, precedent to say, oh, well, you did pay for water?
Yes.
Because that wasn't our intention, the intention is to just have.
Now, it won't, now it'll be very clear, like, I don't want to.
But you're, so what you're saying is you're going to turn around and say, you have paid for water in the past, why wouldn't you pay for water now? We've never paid for water, uh, since at least two thousand and five, probably previous, that water has always been the town's, the town's building, the town supplies the water, the public.
Right. So, we have the lawyers discussing that, and then, like, I have no problems, like, I think we should supply water, but the direction we're getting from attorneys is to not set precedent, and I, you're not gonna like me, Erin, sometimes, I see, this is what the lawyer said to do, I do what the lawyer says to do.
Have I?
Same thing with accountants.
I, 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 last I heard, our lawyer had not heard from, when we tried to connect them.
Have they not self-connected?
Well, latest today, Brian said, I reminded Brian, he was, he responded that he was gonna reach out again, is the terms he used.
Okay.
Okay.
I also have his phone number, so let me let him know that this has been the two meetings in June, and both times it was discussed.
I will reach out to the BMR attorney again.
He has not been called.
One oh six PM today.
Well, let me see if I have his number. Brian, Riley, ah, I do have his phone number, so I will call him tomorrow, and I will put it in my calendar. When can I do it? I can call him at eight AM.
I just don't, I, I just want to, I guess, put it on record that when the motion was made for the fifteen thousand dollars in good faith, to have healthy water available for that building for the rest of the school year, it wasn't the intentions of, of any of us to set a precedence, and I think that needs to be on record.
Okay.
It was really the only choice we had in that moment to keep that building open as a school, uh, I believe that there were committee members on, on the school committee that would have tried to make other motions that night, had that not happened, and I thought it was in very good faith of you guys to, to offer that, but right now, it feels like we're trying to set a precedence that we did buy water, or we paid for water, and, and.
So, I feel like there were.
We're going in a circle to make, to pay a bill that is being paid by the town of Millville.
Yeah.
It is being paid by town of Millville.
Just one question, is this the first time that we've used ARPA funds specifically for this purpose?
Yes.
Okay, so, aren't we setting the precedent now by doing this in a way? So, if, I don't know, it just seems.
There's a reason for it, I think.
Yeah.
What is the reason?
Well, I, I think that answer lies with legal.
Yeah, so, I, I, I mean, I don't want to.
I get into a spitting contest.
Well, listen, you guys, this water has been an issue since that building, and you know this, Roland, that water has never been good, the water, and Millville, MES water operations is part of your town budget for a reason, and it has been forever, it has never been, there's never been a line item in the school budget for water operations in Millville, and that's the precedent, if you really want to go there. I, I don't know why anyone's trying to change that this many years later.
Oh, I think I've explained that repeatedly, but.
It's not a capital cost, Peter.
That's exactly right.
It is, it is a building.
It's an operating cost.
Everyone has, has to have water, sewer.
Right, and so, I'll also say on the bulk water, that's a consumer choice, that wasn't a requirement of Mast EP.
It was that night.
The water wasn't, um, treated improperly, such that it was as potent for your use.
Peter and I disagree on this point, disagree on this point, because she did say we were out of compliance in that meeting.
She said we were one hundred percent out of compliance.
So, to solve that, a, a solution was bulk water. It might not have been the only solution, but that was a solution.
It wasn't the only, it was a consumer choice, right?
That's right.
But it wasn't the only option.
So, anyway.
So, I'm not trying to upset anyone, I'm trying to provide clarity, and following advice of our attorney, that's what I'm trying to do. So, I don't know if anyone seconded this.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Richard. As to any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Upstain.
Aye. Matthew?
Nay.
Okay. Well, it passed. Okay.
And then, there was another item, right?
What, we discussed the corrective action plans? Yeah, other considerations, I don't know, I don't know.
I just put in, there's a.
Yeah, in case anything else happened. Anything else you want to talk about, Erin?
Um, just, so, corrective action, once it's approved, will, then that.
What happens then, they're, Mast EP's happy, saying you, you were happy with your plan.
And execute it.
And your plan includes.
Permanginate, switch over.
Permanginate.
Yep.
Before school opens.
Yes, that's the goal.
All right.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, so you finished? Yes, Andrew?
Under other considerations, have we considered what other options and what those costs entail?
What do you mean? Like, having bulk water forever?
Having bulk water, having a new, or fixing the pump, water lines, that, have we explored that at all?
That's the twenty-five thousand dollars that we discussed earlier, to like, research it.
Okay.
Um, but I think we need to have the corrective action plan approved first, because the third option, the first option is the bulk water for, through now, and then the permanginate for like the next couple of years, and then the third part was a long-term solution, so GEP needs to approve that plan where it's included in the long-term solution, then we have to research what the long-term solution will be, and then we can start looking at what those options are.
I mean, can't we even get some ballpark numbers before we spend twenty-five thousand to research what it might cost?
Um, so, could we, is that something we could have Sarah maybe look into, like, rough and tough numbers?
Well, but I just, the, the rough and tumble numbers are, if you're doing a water line, absent bedrock.
Mm-hmm.
It's a million bucks a mile, and it's a mile something, and you need a pump station that's four, five hundred grand, you know, to move the water.
I think we talked about two and a half million.
I think so.
Two and a half million to give it some cushion for the water line.
Yeah, so I would envision that, when, when we go to the, look for the special revenue fund loan, which is what Mast EP says, you gotta, you know, go after that, and then go after our grant, and hopefully you don't have to do the loan, right? You don't actually close on the loan if they approve it, but the loan amount would likely be two and a half to three million bucks, is just off the top of my head, because the other part is, I expect there will be bedrock encountered, whether you come from Uxbridge or you come from, you know, Blackstone, and, and it's just to connect to the school, not any peripheral objectives.
It could be a collateral benefit, but we won't know that until later in the road.
That's good, it could be, yes.
And the funding sources for that would be either the hope that we get a grant, which is.
For Mass DEP, you heard the lady, yes.
More than I'd say 70% shot.
But what would be, do we know what the percentage of a success, and then a, how much they would fund it?
They would fund the whole thing, like she even said, yeah, because when Peter and I met with Mary Jude, like, the next week or the week after, and I said, you know, we're gonna be asking for like, two, two and a half million dollars, she's like, Jennifer, that's so, like, I have someone asking me for 110 million dollars for a cleanup. Like, you think you're asking for so much money, yet it's so much money for you. But in the scheme of things, of things that I'm approving and seeing, like, this is not a lot of money. So, I know, so that made me feel like, well, maybe we should ask for town water for everyone, um, but yeah, so she's.
But I think she said they have 38 million.
38 million, that would be.
It's coming online.
To give away, that would be the grant, which would be free. Um, and then the other option would be, we would get, um, a loan, and get 13.5% of that forgiven right off the top, and it would be a zero interest loan, so we'd do that, like a debt exclusion. Um, and then the third option, I guess those would be the two funding ways for the, if we want to tap into Blackstone as an example, and then the other option would be, do we want to try to repair the well, which, based on all this, I, it sounds like a nightmare, but like, but that, and that could be less money for the capital, but the ongoing operational expense could be obscene.
But, but if you read the corrective action plan closely regarding the sodium permanginate, you, you see that, at least Dr. Gulick thinks that's a very good.
Stable.
That eliminates the disinfection byproduct challenge that has plagued the town, from which people think the water's no good, right? That takes that problem away. It doesn't eliminate the PFAS problem, and that's what's driving Mass DEP to ask us, you know, to look hard at tapping into Blackstone, because apparently they're good with PFAS for today.
Do we know how long that loan would probably be?
I think they're 20-year, typically 15, 20-year deals.
Um, roughly about 2 million, assuming like, over 20 years of, to pay back, assuming there's no interest rate.
It's real money to pay back.
Yeah, which isn't something we have.
With a possible 13% forgiveness.
Yeah, well, if it's two and a half.
The two and a half million, so say we get forgiven, that.
Right.
It's not 13%, but like.
Right, right, right.
60, yeah, be close, be close.
But, um, and then, do we know what the cost would be for, like, to have, to order the water from Blackstone, Oxbridge, or whatever?
No, we don't even know if they have capacity, uh, and, and interest. What I do know about Oxbridge is they were looking at bringing more water up to Kempton Road Way, for, in Oxbridge, principally for allowing for development. And the project that they had, you know, they had somebody who'd done some numbers on it, was a four and a half million dollar project. It did require, uh, a pumping station and piping, and who knows what else to provide the capacity. And they did not, they had no interest in a SRF loan. They were looking for Congressman McGovern to find a way to find the money, and I was at that meeting, representing Millville. And as a byproduct, we would get maybe additional water coming into Kempton Road, but probably not really. And right now, there's a no blasting zone up there, so that's the other problem.
Aaron, do you want to come back to the table?
I just, um, I remember that conversation, and then when Mary Jude was with us, um, at our May.
Sixteenth.
May 16th, I must have said 11. She said Oxbridge is going to need PFAS money, just based on the way things were looking. I, I think it's very important, I know you haven't started the process yet, when you're looking into Blackstone, I think you had said you were going to reach out.
I have reached out, I sent a note to Ryan, by having her back for him, so then I'm friendly with someone else on there, and I reach out to her, and I have her back. Did you reach out to the town admin?
No, not yet.
Okay, so maybe tomorrow, when I do my Brian phone calls, I will start, yeah.
So just talking about capacity and when you're writing for that grant, I think it's important to consider that. And, and I know I already said this at our May meeting, and including a new well for them, for whoever's going to be supplying it, into that grant money.
Yeah.
For.
Right, so that might make it more than the two and a half.
Correct.
Then I make it the three, and then.
But it's still little compared to what other.
Agreed, and maybe we'd still get it for free, and then, um, the one thing there is, then I would expect Blackstone to contribute somewhat to that.
Well, if it's a grant, and it's.
If it's a grant, we have it for free, but if we get the loan, like, say it's, say it's not 3 million.
That would be different.
To, to drill the extra, like, they would have responsibility for, I don't know, 20%, 25%, and we have the 75% responsibility, maybe flip the school number.
Right.
Something like that.
So just, I would just keep that in mind, I think, is going, you're going to need a carrot like that for Blackstone to entertain.
Yeah.
Because of their water bans, and that they already have, um, I think it, it could be a positive.
But we're thinking the need is, uh, 1,000 gallons a day.
For the building.
For the building.
Right.
Right. And that's during the school days.
Would increase their capacity beyond that, that that would, you know.
That would be an ask from, yeah, understand.
Yeah, so just a thought, but I did, I do remember Mary Jude saying that about, so I feel about Oxbridge.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm happy to help, uh, when the time comes.
Alright, thank you, Aaron.
Say that too loud now.
Sorry, you'll be like, God, this woman's calling me all the time.
And you didn't whisper, you didn't.
Anything else on MES water, before we move on?
Well, I think we should, personally, I just think we should get more information on the specifics of the numbers, because right now, they don't seem too friendly for us to even really entertain, to be honest. And with all the unknowns.
What do you mean?
Well, we don't know how much the monthly cost would be for the water.
Yep.
We don't know exactly how much the cost for the, uh, piping would be.
So you don't want to have water at the school at all?
I do, but I'm saying, is this option even very viable? If it's two and a half million, and, you know, yes, it would be great if we get a, um, a grant, but if we don't, we can't do it. And i- if the cost per month is too much, because we don't know what that is, we also can't really do that. So that's why I'm saying what, we need, I feel like we really need to, before we spend the 25,000 on the research, we really need to get some, at least some numbers to kind of fill in the blanks, to get some idea of what this is going to cost, before we start throwing down money to research on the specifics of this action.
I think we have to do the research to present to Mass DEP for the grant.
And, and.
And then we wouldn't get any.
The, the other thing is, is that with the end of the year, the possibility of the regulations becoming tighter on the filtration and, you know, impurities in the water, is Blackstone going to be able to do that, and how much that, will that cost them? Because that's another thing that we, they might just tack on to ours, is, you know, so that's another thing we have to consider, and how much that'll cost, because, you know, all these things will cost some money.
Yes.
So I kind of get Andrew's point, is there a way at the municipal level to issue, like, a request for information, kind of like an RFP, to get contractors to look at these possibilities, maybe write a scope of work, and come up with a price?
Well, I think it's more an engineering study, that, where they estimate the, the cost based on, you know, what they know today, so it's like, so I, I, we don't, we haven't progressed too far on that, process.
So i- i- in my world, where I come from, you would do like an R5, you, you know, zero dollar, represent, you wouldn't put any money in it, but you would solicit invitations to come in and look, and at least give you an idea or a technical proposal, just to kind of.
Something you'd ask Dr. Gulick to do, like to maybe give us kind of.
Yeah, just to kind of look at it, but.
Rough and tough numbers.
You wouldn't actually put any money, or encumber any money for that. And that might give Andrew some comfort level.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's an idea, I don't know.
It's a good idea, yeah.
No matter what way we go, there's gonna be a monthly bill.
Yes.
Either treatment, buying, buying bulk water, or buying city water.
Yep. Yes. Peter, could you speak to Dr. Gulick, and could he do some, maybe a kind of rough and tough?
We've been talking, and I don't know that he can put it together, but he can help us find the persons to do that, yeah.
Okay. Okay? Anything else on MES water?
I know it's Peter's favorite topic.
It is his favorite.
Niagara Falls, if you know the Stooges.
Okay, um, looking at who's here for things. Chief Cooper, you here to talk about the Public Safety Committee?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you come up to the table, you can sit in the hot seat.
He's really excited about it.
And did you want to talk about Old Town Hall, because we have Joe here?
Um, Joe, did you want to talk about Old Town Hall?
Somebody want to know, I can.
Yeah, so you have in your packets his summary of where things are at, so he, he's just here both for that.
And Sarah mentioned the grants and all that, so I thought we covered it.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe, I think you're covered on that, that's right. And so the only other thing would be, when you get to appointments, but I think, maybe Joe will be pleased of the, your thinking.
Okay, so then, why don't we go to the finalization of the Public Safety Committee, and then we'll go to appointments?
Yep.
Okay. Shouldn't have sat down, Chief Coop. Trying to not be in the hot seat.
Exercise.
Okay.
That's right. Okay, so, last time we talked about, I don't remember what the makeup was, we had five people though, and then we.
Yeah, we had discussed, uh, possibly five people on a committee. And I, I wanted to do a really narrow scope on this, more strategic plan, I think, for each department, uh, Fire and Police. Really don't want to get into anything wider than that, but just try to help each department draft a strategy. And, um, then that strategy could be simple, three to five slides, at least a living document, that, um, would go from, here's where we are, here's where we'd like to be, you know, and here's how we plan on trying to implement some of this, or our ask. I think this is a heavy lift, it's just more, um, having a document on hand, that's like a living document, that each chief could, uh, update, and, uh, at least kind of bring, carry with them, essentially, and, and give us some guidance on where we're headed. I actually have a little bit of concern with participation, of course, coming in the summer months, I know that boards are hard to fill. So, um, if we do establish a board, we're subject to open meeting laws, right? So, do we want to?
So you're going to establish a committee, right? And the, the makeup, if we could just talk about that real quickly? In, in meeting with the police union on contract negotiations, and we talked a little bit about this Public Safety Committee.
Right.
And its purpose, and some of the challenges it's trying to overcome, right? They did suggest having a rank and file member from each, the Fire Department and the Police Department, as an addition to the core five, so really making it a seven-member committee.
To establish a, a strategy for each.
To do, no, so this committee, first to be made up of, you had the chief, you had, what, one selectman?
Yeah, we were really thinking five, yeah, and one selectman, but, you know, kind of looking back on things, um, I'm trying to keep a narrow scope, so this doesn't become bigger than it would should be.
But again, it's, whether you, it seemed like a great idea.
No.
To have, you know, a patrolman.
Yeah.
And a firefighter on the committee as well, because their perspective is, they're the ones most affected by any,
Changes.
You know, structural changes, for example.
Because I think the biggest outcome from the committee should be that living document, that strategy, which I think will help both retention and recruitment. But, um, I mean, Chief, what's your take on that, I mean?
Well, I have some notes on the things we've been doing, I mean, right now, we have a wide-open hiring process. We have two interviews tomorrow night. Promising, uh, part-time offices. So, um, I was thinking about, like, recruitment angles on this, I mean, roughly, we could pay for an academy, but there's no enforcing that, and roughly around 40 grand, between paying them while they're in the academy, um, and their equipment. So, we take a couple of hits like that, that's gonna hurt if send somebody to the academy and they leave, you know, right away. Thought about some sign-in bonuses, but then we're probably gonna have to look to do something for the others that are already there, that are really being loyal to me and sticking around.
Yep.
And the sign-on bonus could be like, uh, three payments, something like that.
So my take on this is, I, I mean, I know you and I have chatted, uh, a little bit about it, I have a little bit different of a take on it, I mean, I agree that money's definitely an incentive, but specialties in reorganization, I think, is important, um, when it comes to retention, and I think that'll help your recruitment as well. Folks coming into the department are gonna want to know why they want to work here, and, you know, if they're actually a patrolman, and they kind of stay there for 20 years, with no specialties and, and no added, uh, assignments, it becomes kind of stale.
I think that's what the Public Safety Committee will show me, how I can see something in a different aspect, as far as a specialty assignment, I mean, we're tiny here, that's.
No, I know, I, I'm just concerned filling the board, uh, you know, I'm all for, for help, but, uh, you know, I wish we had a bigger audience.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm happy to help, I mean, I can offer some materials, I, I have some templates and things that I can share. I just, I don't know if a board's gonna, if we're gonna be able to fill a board.
Well, I think if we have one selectman, which will be you, and then the police officer, firefighter, the town administrator, the police chief, and the fire chiefs, that's one, two, three, four, five, six.
I thought you took me off the list.
Oh, did I take you off the list? Okay, fine.
Oh, no, Peter, you're not escaping, we gotta add you back in there.
So that's five, so that's fine, and then I don't know, I'm, there might be one or two citizens who want to be on, I know you may be concerned with the size. For the TA search committee that we hired, Peter, it was 12 people.
Wow.
12. Everyone wanted on, and everyone got on, which was fine.
Yeah.
It actually worked out really well, because then we had so many subcommittees, you could have three or four people working together on like, the rubric, like, it was a very lightly burdened.
Yeah.
Committee, if you look at it that way. So that worked out really well, um, but if you did a selectman, a police officer, a patrolman, like a regular firefighter, and then the police chief and the fire chief, and then you could have one citizen, that would be six. You can meet, like, once a month? Do a lot of things over email, like, updates and things like that.
Just hope there's no splits in the vote.
With six?
Yeah.
Well, I think Andrew should join us, because he, he has an interest in fire as well, I think we both have, you know.
Is he a fire maniac?
He did, you know. I'm keeping the lightest away from it. So two members of the board?
Two members of the board, then you have a seven, I don't know.
I'll even buy him a lighter.
Do, is that, would you be interested in that?
Well, sure, um, but like, um, my thing is, is like, maybe we can see what we get for, like, if we get like, multiple citizens or not.
Yeah.
And then we can kind of see and, you know.
Being optimistic with multiple citizens.
Yes. You never know.
Never know.
So then, so I think the next step then is to maybe, for us, I'll put on my Facebook account, if anyone's interested in being on a Public Safety Committee, um, which will help create policy for the Fire Department and Police Department. Which I have to, and I'll put Peter, I'll put your email on there, and they can send you an email.
Yep.
So you think that's gonna be beneficial, to try and help?
Well, you'll, I'll definitely get some ideas, I mean.
Yeah, but it's not really policy, like, you have pretty specific policies and practices, as does the Fire Department, so I think it's more.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm looking for the.
Recruitment retention.
The 30-second, you know, elevator pitch.
I mean, I, I'm thinking, you know, three to five slides, just, uh, a living document that each department can have. Just, uh, here's where we are, here's where we're going, and.
Oh, with like, a, a, with, to create a living document for a long-term, short-term and long-term.
Yep.
Strategies.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
I think that needs to be a strategy for each department.
Okay. So it'll help with like, hiring, scheduling.
Yeah.
Okay.
Staffing, or.
Yeah, I'll put staffing and scheduling, potentially could be topics. And this would be like, guidance, and you, like, it might, like, the department might outgrow what happens, so then it'll have to be updated, or we can be like, you know what? Things are going fine, so we can do it that way.
And there may be some things we don't obtain, but there may be some things that we will, you know?
Yeah. Okay. So like, maybe, to be creative to help, let's see, I'm just writing this down, creative to help with a difficulties of a smaller department.
Yep.
Okay, done. Anything else, Chief Coop?
I don't think so, I know.
And you're okay with adding a patrolman to the?
I thought it was a pretty good idea when I heard him say it, I mean, it, it's a little different for me, because I'm out there, too.
Yeah.
You know.
Right, you're player coach, you're not just coach.
So, um, but, but I think it is a good idea to
Okay.
Have somebody in the rank and file, so they probably see it a little different than me.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know?
And I will say, because I know that probably the burden of another meeting, like, like, we could check in at like, six months, like, you could have a long time to do this, this isn't something that's urgently needed.
Well, right, yeah, I mean, you know, once you get a dra- I think we can have a draft in, in a few months, but it, uh, it can always be a draft, it's something, and this is really for the chiefs, too, to help guide them, so this is something that can be changed, uh, you know, as they go.
Alright, well, everyone start advertising and letting people know if there's anyone who wants to be involved.
Or we'll have to get the SAC and bring them in.
That's right. Okay. Anything else, Chief Coop?
Unless there's any volunteers out here.
I don't think so.
Okay, great. Alright, thank you.
It's a big audience, you know, it's, it's packed here.
She said okay, what did you say?
No. Uh, you don't want to, you don't want to, you want to volunteer for the national layout.
You'll have some quality time together.
Yeah.
Mother-son bonding.
Lot, it's a lot.
Okay, so now I'm gonna go to appointments, reappointments, effective July 1st, so that's this list?
Yep.
Okay.
The conservation is, got some typos in it.
Jeffrey Pettit Pamela, conservation?
Yeah.
Why, is there someone missing?
Me?
Oh.
Eric Olson?
Oh, yeah.
And Jeff Pettit.
She has that, I gave her those sheets.
Jeff Pettit, I don't think.
No, I think Eric was appointed for three years, I'm not.
Oh, his was three, is Jeff Pettit getting back in, or is that?
If it's on the list, I assume he's in.
You're in there for a three-year appointment.
Oh, yeah, here you go.
On the second page.
How'd I miss that?
And I think Eric's already appointed on a three-year term, you're, these are.
Yep.
The one years.
One years, and I'm not sure why they're one years, but, uh.
And Jeff Pettit's coming back in?
Uh, she added him, and she checked with him, but, uh.
We'll say yes.
So we'll say yes, and if they want to pull out, they can pull out.
Yeah.
Right, alright.
And then, here, we're gonna talk about the building inspector.
Yeah, so on the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, um, there was a question whether this should be a one-year appointment or a three-year appointment, so I did, because the town, way back in 91 or 89, adopted, uh, Mass General Law, a little bit, 143, what's that?
So it's before a couple of people who are on the board were born.
Yeah, it was 81.
Me?
81.
Okay.
That's right.
Mass General Law 143, and in Mass General Law 143 is a Section 3Y, which talks about building inspectors under that chapter, uh, should be, uh, are to be a three-year term, and not removed from office unless, uh, held on charges and a just cause, okay, after a hearing. So I checked with council, because Millville has had this for many years, but has been doing one-year appointments for this position. Checked with council, and council came back and said, Millville would need to have, at a town meeting, adopt that Section 3Y specifically, for it to be obligated to do a three-year appointment. So you really have the option of a one-year or a three-year term, you're not obligated to a three-year term, and it, you know, a three-year term creates an obligation for three years, and the just cause adds a higher level of concern of, should you want to be concerned about someone? That said, I, I, I don't see any issues with the appointment for three years of the individual in question, but that's your call.
Yeah, actually, a compliment today on our building inspector.
Mm-hmm.
And who is now, by the way, a commissioner, he's officially.
Oh, congratulations.
Done all the tests, and, uh, showed up on time to wherever he has to show up, and they gave him his, uh, approval as a commissioner, so that's, that's actually something, that's, that's something to be proud of.
Does he have the official ticket book now? Go over and get tickets.
So. Anyway.
So then, um.
But he's on the one-year.
Yeah.
Appointments, part of this, but you can do whatever you, you know, however you wish to do it. Appointments, part of this, but you can do whatever you, you know, however you wish to do it.
So I'm okay moving Joe to a three-year appointment.
Need a motion?
I was just gonna make, put him, I was just gonna bump him down to here, to the three-year appointments. We'll put him on page two. Does that make sense? Is that what we should do, Peter?
And what about electrical and plumbing?
I think those are all one-year appointments.
Yeah, I know, but.
I I don't know about the three-year thing. I don't know that a, that applies, well.
Why don't we keep him the one year since we don't have the answer, but we can ask the town council about those for next, for next year. So I haven't heard any noise about their performance either, so.
Don't see it offhand.
So I'm gonna read the one-year appointments off then. I'm gonna skip Joe cuz I moved him to the second page. And then, so if anyone wants to hold one, you can hold it and then we'll do that. And Andrew, if you wanna hold it and move him back to one, you can do that on the next page. Is that okay? All right, so one-year appointments. This is from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Building Department, Mark Aruda, Assistant Building Inspector, Jack Grenga, Electrical Inspector, John Di Aga- Di Agostino, thank you, Plumbing Inspector, Cable Access Committee. Uh, Timothy Labonte, Cable Coordinator, Timothy Labonte, member. Calling, is it Curtis or Curtis? Member, Carl Hamilton, member, Madison Durand, member. Conservation Commission, Jeff Pettit, member, Pamela Maloney, member. Cultural Council, Kristen Alves, member, Nicole O'Brien, member. Emergency Management, Mima, Roy Leard Jr., Director, Benton Phillips, member. Sorry, Benton Phelps, member, thank you. Flag Warden, Warren Art Campbell, Flag Warden, Green Community Committee, Richard Bremlist, member. Matthew Maylie, member, Richard Herto, member. Open Space Recreation Planning Committee, Kevin Delgizzi, member. Parks and Recreation Department, William Coop, member, Kevin Delgizzi, member. Police Department, full-time Keith Lanigan, police officer. Part-time Thomas Reynolds, police officer, James Cusack, Cusack, police officer. Nicholas Green, police officer, Treasurer Collector's Office, Jane Snellman, Treasurer Collector. Marcia Far- Faro, Assistant Treasurer Collector, Veteran Services, Warren Art Campbell, Veterans Agent. I don't know whether I made a motion. I just, did I make a motion? So I will make a motion to approve the list of appointments from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as read. Thank you, Andrew. I might have made a motion, but I didn't remember, so we're totally covered now.
Do we, quick question, do we have some vacancies on a couple of these boards?
Yes, so there'll be, uh, the the town clerks away. I wanted to get, I, she's away on vacation. When she comes back, I'll have her put the latest list of vacancies on the website. What's there is as of, I don't know, three or four months ago. So yes, we have, let's take, take uh, Parks and Recreation, you know, there's a couple of, three vacancies there, I think. Uh, Open Space and Rec, you know, it's just Kevin Delgizzi, you know, that sort of thing, so we, we have room.
No, I was thinking the emergency management one, not, not that I.
Couple there that aren't. That's right. So we'll have the latest list updated as soon as Diane comes back.
Does the chief want another hat?
Any further discussion? Yeah, just.
Fair enough.
Any further discussion? Seeing now, call for the vote. Roland? Richard? Andrew? Jennifer's, aye. Matthew? Okay. All right, so three-year appointments. So I'm gonna make a motion this time, and this time I'll remember that I did it. This is what happens when you're old. It's on the same page. Oh, that's just declined. Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the following three-year appointments from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Board of Assessors, David Manzello, member, Pawlet, member. Conservation Commission, Roland Barrett, member. Historical Commission, Emo Berthalet, member. Police Department, full-time Scott Gould, police officer. Part-time Roy Sullivan, Sullivan Sergeant. And Building Inspector and Zoning Enforcement Officer, Joe Fitzpatrick. Okay, thank you.
I just want to, I'm staying for myself, but I'll vote for everything else.
I voted for myself for voice chair.
Did you? Okay.
Yeah, you can do that.
If you don't believe in yourself, who's gonna believe in you?
I guess you can vote for yourself to do a non-paying job. Congressmen can vote themselves a raise. We can vote ourselves no, no money.
That's right. And like, if you should believe in yourself, right? If you're not gonna vote for yourself, then.
Well, I know, it's just.
Well, I'm doing this for the money, so.
We could vote to double our salaries.
Just a point of or, uh, information on the full-time poli- on the police department, you have one years and you have three years. The three years of people who've been here, what, five years, I think it is under the. Yeah, so tho- those guys get three-year appointments cuz, uh, under the union contract, if they've been here a certain number of years, they get three-year appointments. So we're lucky to have them.
Yeah, absolutely. Any further discussion?
So the only question, so I mean, I'm not against putting the building inspector to three years, but I'm just thinking as a precedent, is it a thing we wanna do considering some of the more recent issues that the board has had with building inspectors?
Well, you know, again, you, I I don't know how bound you are by precedent, frankly. So I think the Board of Selectmen have the authority to make appointments as they see fit, right? So in this situation, you you're making a three-year appointment of an individual that you're presumably comfortable with, right? With a proven track record, right?
So you mean if we get someone new?
But if you get someone new, you might just do the one-year appointment.
A little bit.
Concern though is that will we remember it? Cuz that often doesn't happen because boards change. This board, I mean, it's changed a couple of times already. So remembering what happened, you know, ten years ago, or even five years ago.
I will remember forever.
That's the only concern I have, is that like, cuz then.
That's scary, like June eighth, nineteen ninety-seven. This is what you did, that was wrong.
Cuz if, like, we go back to the law, that'll be what we reference, and then we'll assume that's what we always did, or that that's, that we changed it because of a legal reason, not necessarily because we felt like it.
So it'll be in the minutes that you've discussed that, right?
So that's true, no one does read the minutes, but we should, maybe we should make this a policy, one of our board selectmen policies. Because then, like, I review those every year after the election, so people should be reviewing them. They don't have to memorize them, but that, we should amend the policies and put that in there around appointments.
Specifically for like any three-year versus one-year appointments?
I think we can put that in for any.
And then like a reference of like.
New, if you have a new person, you might wanna consider a one-year policy for one to three years to get a proven track record. Yeah, for sure.
As long as there's like a reference of something like what we did, that way it's not like, cuz I, I mean, not that I have anything wrong with it. But just as a future thing, I'm thinking, cuz.
New appointments, one year for three times in a row.
Yeah, that should be a policy.
Just for, just.
We do with the police officers.
Yeah, like Jack Grenga and John Di Agostino. I've, I've known both of them forever. Plus, and I, they were both inspectors back when I was selectman from oh nine to eighteen. And never ever did anybody ever complain about their performance.
Yeah, we're very lucky to have them, frankly. Yeah, and they're responsive whenever called, they, they come.
Like a seniority policy for.
Yeah, for sure.
Make it easier also on the town clerk, but also for the people running those positions. Okay, I'm good with that then.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing now, now call for the vote. Roland? Richard? Andrew? Aye. Matthew? Oh, congratulations. Okay, appointments. So now I'm gonna go back up to the top, three B, new business, consideration of appointment of Roland. Does Jarlais? Did I say his name right?
De Jalay.
De Jalay.
Not French.
I am not French. As Associate Planning Board Member through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So that is in here somewhere.
Yep, so you have a letter from the, uh, to the Millville Board of Selectmen from the Planning Board, um, where they voted. Um, to recommend he be appointed as Associate Planning Board Member by the Board of Selectmen. And there's a background of, you know, nice resume on Roland.
He's a local business owner too, right?
Oh, nice.
So I know your policy is you prefer to have people present, but because you've got this letter from the Planning Board, I have enough to.
Yeah, I'll be holding to that because I would prefer to have a, either a member or somebody here.
There's no one that can come from the planning board or anyone?
Yeah, I don't know, but uh.
Who's on the planning board? I guess, can we table this, can we table this to June ta- to July tenth? Because that is on our policies. Andrew's absolutely right. That we want, if the person can't be here, then someone from the planning board. Let's give him one more chance, and if. No, we had extensive discussion around that, so we should. You're right. You keep me honest, Andrew, and I appreciate that. Um, okay, so then the last thing on new business, um, so I don't know if you remember a couple of years ago, we did a survey, um, around, just to ask people like, what's the most important to you? That's why, like, when we established the, um, Highway Stabilization Fund, like, cuz every, number one for everyone was roads. Fix the roads, 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 roads. So I was like, okay, so we should set aside some money to make sure we're, you know, trying to meet that need. Um, and then when they, then two years ago, we were, had like a little bit of a surplus, and I was like, oh, maybe we're turning the corner and we can get like it'll swing from ten thousand to thirty thousand, get full of surplus, but then this year we had the deficit of hundred and thirty, or hundred and forty thousand, rough and tough numbers. So like, should we ask people if we have a deficit again, can't cover with free cash, like, what are your priority things to close? Or would you wanna see an override? Like, cuz that's kind of, I think next year that's where we're gonna be, where it's gonna be. Either we put forth an override or we start closing things.
Turn the lights back off again.
Do not turn the streetlights off. It's only saves like twenty thousand dollars and it's a big pain in the butt.
Taking away the trash, that's it.
Well, it's funny, cuz someone said, can you put the trash back in? I was like, it's gonna be half a million dollars now, like, to do that for the year, so there's no way we have enough money for that. But I wanted to see if anyone had any other ideas for questions to ask, cuz and I will put this together, we can review it. So one was, you know, should we have a shortfall? Um, what would you like to see? What would you close? And I'll put things like library senior center. Um, reduced public safety budget, reduced school. Um, the school's tough because we have to get buy-in from Blackstone, but. And then, are there things, maybe do we wanna ask for priorities moving forward? So for example, last year we asked, like, well, how do you want us to handle the town hall? And the first option, which we investigated, was to perhaps look at a long-term solution for this building. We came up with some EPA roadblocks to that. So then the second biggest thing that got the most votes was fix the old town hall building, and actually there were one woman, and Peter has these surveys in his office somewhere, this lady wrote a very long, like, I went to school in that building, my children were just, please keep that building. So some people had some really like heartfelt ties to that, so that made me feel good that we're kind of re-investigating that. But are there other projects like that in town that we wanna ask about? Are there other things we should be saving or fixing or?
The walkway on there? You know, what do you prefer to see, walkway, basketball?
Playground.
Playground.
Well, so we could ask about that. We've already put in another grant for the walkway. So then we'd have to change it.
Not necessarily, they could just get a feel from the community.
But then if they, okay.
Then we'll know if they were against that decision or not.
Maybe we can say something like, so we're planning on taking, there's like a bug flying around my head, starting to crazy. Um, we're planning on taking that, like, this is the plan for that. Do you like it? Yes or no? And if not, what's your suggestion? Okay.
Not to be a penny pincher, but do we know how much this will be cost, this will cost to do itself? Okay, so remember, prices were like different for like different surveys.
No, just to print the thing, to print it and do the. If I take it to the post office, it's, so we have everything here to print already, so that's all right, like in the cost of office supplies. And it was like a hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty cents when I took it to the post office. It was something like that.
I remember certain, like, departments do certain postings, and like, the pricing doesn't, isn't very consistent, so.
No, it's not, and we take it out of Peter's Town Administrator budget.
No, it comes out of the town hall, yeah, it's just supplies and postings. We have postings lying on it.
Well, it gets line sticky notes now, Peter. Don't indulge.
Don't worry. I I changed the ink in my pens just so I.
Adds water to them, shakes them.
I almost wanna ask about an override, but who's gonna be like, yes, I wanna pay, like, please charge me more. Like, they're gonna say no. Do I see override? No.
Could, you know what, you could always ask.
I guess it'd be, should there be a shortfall like this, or would you support an override?
Would you support an overdrive, override to get your trash back?
I mean, since the schools drive your budgets, I don't, I don't mean to step on the schools, you know, parade by any means, but you're you, you know, they're in five buildings essentially, and they probably could be in three and function quite fine. So, o- o- one question is the acceleration of the consolidation of buildings, how, how desirable that might be. The other one is maybe a survey, since it's a survey. And we're gonna be facing the feasibility study, and we know that their top solution that they've identified so far is the two-school solution, which is the middle school and the high school serving all of the students by the various con- conversions. Whether that's something we probe, because that, it's a different meth- that gets to beyond the school parent population, if you will. And uh, might give a good feed, bit of feedback for BMR leadership as well, knowing what the sentiment of.
So would you support the feasibility study, or what would be your preferred configuration?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I mean, there's so many combinations and permutations. There's a feasibility study that they're gonna be faced with. But the part of it is, you know, there's, high on the list is the two-school solution, and whether there's appetite for that. I think if you, I've heard one person that was in this room this evening who's instrumental in what happens at the schools. How's that, the way I said that? Who would definitely not wanna see MES come out of the school system. From where I said on Capitol, that's one of the attractive byproducts of the two sc- of the plans they have is MES coming back to the town. Just because that's a, you know, then what do you do with that, right? So many things you could do with it. So anyway, that's just speaking with that hat on.
Let me come up with a couple of questions. Like I said, we're, whenever you, I'll email this out, so you can all review it, and then we can have like a discussion on updates for the next um, meeting. Anything else that you can think of? Okay, well, I'll ca- I'll put this in a Word document. I will email it as a attached copy. And then you can review it ahead of the meeting, and then we'll have a conversation within the meeting about further changes.
Do we, do we dare ask the whole MES water question?
Go for it. What's your perception of MES water? I mean, the perception is far worse than the reality.
Basically, three options, you know. You have basically three options, you know, potable water, coming in by truck, fixing a well, or.
Been a long time. My, my son, I don't believe could drink water when he was a, he's twenty-nine now.
He couldn't. No, they had a, yeah, they had a bubble shut off forever, right?
My daughter was able to. She was, uh, from ninety-four until whatever, I don't know. I forget, I lose track.
Ninety-four, two thousand, right? She was twelve to five, like, I'm sorry, kindergarten to five?
Yeah, kindergarten to fifth grade.
Yeah, so it was probably ninety-four to two thousand. Okay, I'll put it on there. Uh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, they had serious lead and copper issues, which they've resolved some years ago beautifully, and they've kept it great.
And then, and then I know my son, they could drink it, then they could, then they could, and. He started there, I, I would say, and, well, he was born in ninety-four, so he must have started there in ninety-nine.
Okay.
So, so it's a long, a long time, well, been a problem.
I know. It's frustrating that you can't fix it like that, and that's one thing, like, Peter and I meet, like, if someone said, do this and it'll be fixed, done, but no one can say that.
No.
Okay. Anything else on the survey before we move on to old business? Okay. Old business reconsideration of, can you remember what WRRS stands for?
Worcester Retirement, uh, Regional Retirement System, Worcester Regional Retirement System.
So this is two percent COLA, and Peter, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yep, so it's a, it's a increasing the COLA from three percent to two percent, to five percent on the, um, part that COLA applies to, which is, I guess, six, the first sixteen thousand of retirement benefits, okay?
Yep.
And back in, uh, January, February, the board looked at this, took no action, no action was required, no action is still required, but they're, they're coming down to the where June thirtieth is a date by which they're taking a tally of all the members, uh, member towns voting yes or no to this, okay? And so they've reached out again, and in fact, uh, in your packets, I included some correspondence from somebody who called last week. Everybody thought this person was from the Worcester Regional Retirement System, but actually it's just a beneficiary in a retiree from another town, and somehow was aware that Millville hadn't voted on this favorably or unfavorably, and they're close to getting to the two-thirds limit that they need uh, with favorable votes, and so reaching out to see whether, so I said, well, I'll add this to the agenda, so I amended the agenda, and here it is. And I asked if Jane, our treasure collector, and she put together sort of a cost summary, and I, you see it has my hieroglyphics on it again. There's conflicting information, we don't have the answer of clarity, uh, whether this applies, the cu- there's incremental costs through either two thousand thirty-three or two thousand thirty-six. If it's two thousand thirty-three and not dealing with time value of money, the decision you make tonight is a twenty thousand dollar decision. If it's two thousand thirty-six, again, not factoring in time value of money, it's a thirty thousand dollar decision, if you follow me on this, so. For, for Millville. And, uh, so, uh, I'm going to say they're tracking somewhere approximately two-thirds, but not quite all the way to two-thirds. You, you could still take no action, you could vote for it or vote, uh, uh, unfavorably for it. The town did not use ARPA funds, which this is a pandemic-related initiative, okay, from the Worcester Regional Retirement System. Some communities used ARPA funds to provide additional funds to employees who worked during the pandemic, right? Millville, we didn't go that route, and so this is inconsistent with the treatment of the employees, is one argument one could make to say, why, you shouldn't do it besides the out-of-pocket, incremental out-of-pocket cost. A lot of people say, well, it's just two percent, and it's on the first sixteen thousand, it's not really a lot of money, but it's still some real money. So. I don't know what you want to do there.
Yeah, so I have no strong opinion on this, I guess, one thing that um, Peter and I were kind of discussing is, you know, we didn't do this for employees, like a cost, you know, bump it up, we kept it at three percent because that's where our budget allows. And I know it's only a couple thousand dollars, but we're still at a deficit. So I'm kind of in the maybe take no action and kind of just let other people decide, is my thoughts, but if other people want to do something, this is a democracy. So if someone else wants to make a motion.
It's not like, do, I mean, do we really have a, do we really have any weight with this? I mean, there's multiple communities in, in this.
Well, I think it's down to three votes. Three towns haven't voted, the, there's the scuttlebutt that I hear.
But which way is it weighing?
So it's, they need two more votes to get it over the edge.
Oh.
Okay.
So now the pressure's on.
Uh, now the pressure's on, okay, now I understand what's going on.
Yeah. Yeah, so I kind of put you on the spot by putting this.
Well, I, I, to me, it, it makes it quite clear. So. With the deficit, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
That's right.
I think, I think we know, I know which way I'm leaning. Yeah.
So I'm going to move on then, unless someone else wants to?
No.
All right.
Don't, don't buy something if you don't have the money in the bank for it.
So you're either, so you're taking no action.
Take no action.
Voting against, okay.
Yep.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Okay.
I'll let them know.
Um, departments, I see nothing. Public forum? We lost our public forum.
Yeah, everybody, uh, yeah.
Peter, any announcements?
Just I saw that there's a Father's Day lunch at the Senior Center this Thursday, and people can call the Senior Center to just sign up for that, and it's free lunch, I think it's beer and pizza is what they say, root beer and pizza.
Ah, root beer and pizza.
Fathers around the town of any age.
Ah.
Okay, so if you're looking for a free lunch, there it is. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it is.
Very nice.
Uh, and separately, I saw the library on six twenty-six is having a library book and bake evening at six P M. I saw something on Facebook about that, so they're continuing to have events.
Good.
Be very active.
That's good to hear.
Any correspondence?
Nope.
I see no minutes.
No minutes, but we've got a, we're we have, I think, a better solution moving forward, which is allow Sherry to manage it with a little assistance, and I think that'll be great.
Good.
Selectment reports? Roland?
None.
Richard?
None. Nothing I want to mention. Not worth mentioning.
Okay.
Just going to pretend it doesn't happen.
Andrew?
Start running the car.
Fuck, I do it too. Exactly, exactly.
Want to talk about chickens?
You know what, I'm, I'm very pro-farm, pro-chickens, so.
Me too.
There you go.
I'll hold you to that. I think everybody should have at least three roosters, so.
I have nothing.
Amen to that.
And Matthew?
I actually, I'm, I was thinking of something I wish I brought up when Chief Coop was still here, but with going forward with the public safety, like the structuring of it, I'm just curious and kind of can, a little bit concerned, like, how is in terms of staffing and like alignment in that way, is there going to be any overlap or any contradictions that we could see going forward? With the unions and the teamsters and stuff like that, I know that, like, the whole point is to kind of go into like a discovery phase with that, but.
Yeah, that's, that's part of what my, part of my concern was, because this really is for the chiefs, the chiefs need to take, you know, and draw the painting, what is this thing supposed to look like? This should be their operation, so, I mean, I'm, I'm not a, a huge fan of it, um, I mean, I guess it'll get.
Of the rank and file?
Yeah, yeah, I know, I, I think it's for the chiefs, I think the chiefs are obligated, uh, every chief in every municipality is obligated to come up with a draft plan that says we will do this, or we're aiming for this, whatever it is, they're the professionals, they should know that. So, but that's going to directly impact their retention and their recruitment.
Well, so you have executive session tonight where we
Right.
might speak, but we're going to speak about the union negotiations, and it was during the union negotiations, but that the suggestion of the rank and file participator on this came up, so we'll talk a little bit more about that issue.
Yeah.
And we can also control who we appoint when that comes to it.
Right, yeah.
We can still have that.
That's right.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Um, Towns, uh, Administrator Reports?
No, I just want to thank Sherry for putting the appointments together, she worked very hard to make that happen, and here you are, you've basically got a full slate of appointments before the end of the year, that's, uh, I think the first time, and I think that's great, so I thank her for that.
I think we did them last year.
We might have done it last year.
Yeah, it was pretty good, yeah.
They were pretty close.
Our first two years, we were doing them in August.
Uh, also, I, as you're, as the board member at Metacomit Dispatch, last week I went to a board meeting, and we had a presentation and a discussion, that presentation was by the Executive Director of SEMRAC, which is the Southeast Mass Regional Center, which is based in Foxborough, okay, and, and so it, it's a public meeting, it was a public meeting, so the discussion, the topic of discussion was, um, finding, exploring ways, a way for SEMRAC and Metacomit to merge in some manner. The logistics of doing that are very extensive, you know? How they just, how they split their costs up among their current member towns at SEMRAC is different than how Metacomit does it, they do it twenty-five percent equally among the four towns. Metacomit does it by, you know, town population, so we have a small piece of the pie. So anyway, I just want to say, we had those discussions, SEMRAC is in a nuclear fortified building. They have all of the, it's like Star Trek in their building, and then some. Um, and they, you know, they, they track data, so they can tell you how many nine-one-one calls came from where before an event at Foxborough Stadium, how many came and where during the event, and then after the event. They also are the dispatch coordinator essentially for, for Buzzards Bay, for the Coast Guard, and all of the, uh, local, you know, uh, harbor masters and so forth, and the holy smokes, that's pretty incredible. And they have the latest software, which there, there's some, I didn't quite understand it, but they have far superior software, so State nine-one-one has invested in Foxborough a lot more than they have in Metacomit. The operating budgets of both entities are approximately the same, though, which surprised me, and I commented on that, and I'll learn more about that, because I don't understand how all this sexy stuff happens for the same amount of just sort of the routine stuff happens, you see what I'm saying?
Yep, the stadium, that's, that's the variable.
That's the key, yeah.
And of course, if Mansfield's included in that.
That's correct.
Comcast Center.
That's correct, that's correct, exactly. Separately, uh, though, because the process will be lengthy and tedious, even if it gets anywhere, at the same time, Metacomit is exploring expanding, and we, there's a grant been submitted to State nine-one-one for expansion to essentially double the capacity of Metacomit, so that we can bring in other towns, at least two others, into the fold, and by doing that, it might lengthen the time by which Millville doesn't have to write too many big checks for the dispatch. Because State nine-one-one incentivizes further regionalization, so a Bellingham might come in, a Blackstone might come in, we don't know that. Uh, but anyway, that pro- so that's a parallel path of progress. The Metacomit takes on its own, separately, SEMRAC's doing the same sort of thing, and whether the two merge and they, instead of four and six communities, it's six and eight or ten communities more, remains to be seen.
Do we have a contract with them? Like, how are we bound with them?
Yes, we do have a contract, we can get out with a certain period of notice, I can share that with the board, the existing Metacomit, so we, yes.
But if you wanted a shop, if you wanted a shop, you could potentially.
Correct, we give them notice, they charge us for pre-existing, uh, you know, OPEB obligations and stuff like that, pension stuff, so it'd be painful.
There's a buyout, but yeah, 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 you could, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And State nine-one-one is not, there was a representative there from State nine-one-one, you'd think they would take the overview
Right.
and direct the overview, how all this happens, they're letting the communities deal with it. They'll support it, but they're letting the heavy lifting of the community.
Yeah, years ago, it, it was the inverse, the state had the, uh, the umbrella
Yeah.
uh, with nine-one-one and with their hub center out of Framingham, but, yeah.
Yeah, they don't, they're not like the counties and other states that functioned pretty well, from what I'm told. So anyway, that's my, just bringing up to speak, because it's a big deal for Millville to be part of that, there are we're going to get a radio tower, you know, going to get a new tower, that's a dismantled tower from out Western Mass, a little community out there, reassembled here up at the, you know, uh, up at the school. They've provided some, uh, new radios for the police department to the tune of thirty-five grand. Um, so we're, you know, it's a, it's a good setup, and, uh, the communications are constantly challenging and being improved within fire and police dispatch.
Nice.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Items not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to meeting?
Nope.
Okay. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, July tenth, right here at seven o'clock. Um, okay, and then I'll make the motion for executive session, so I will move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law C thirty A, Section twenty-one A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the town, and the chair so declares. Police Teamsters Union Local one seventy, and we will be returning to open meeting via roll call, vote only to adjourn, looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? Seeing now, call for the vote, Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye, Matthew?
Aye.
All right.